Okay, recall the meeting to order. When everybody agrees with Rash, we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and with that, we need to have you administer the office to Brad.
Let's come up, Brad. So, I'll have you repeat after me. I, Brad Bastian.
I, Brad Bastian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council member of the city of Fairfax, Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council member of the city of Fairfax, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
We welcome you, and we're happy to have you on the council. Okay, and with that, we have all members present. Do I hear flag from the back of the room?
The what? That was Danny. You want to ask part of what, certainly can.
Okay, number five, the approval of agenda. And I think you said you have a couple things you want to add?
I have two items I'd like to add to the new business. One would be consideration for the disposal of the old ambulance. As you know, we purchased a new ambulance to replace our 20-year-old ambulance. But the Milroy First Responders have expressed interest in the old ambulance, and I would like to have that up for discussion and action on what to do about that. Second item would be adding to the new business the consideration and approval of the pay equity report for 2018.
Okay, anything else?
That is all I have, Mayor.
Okay, and then with that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Ralph, seconded by Rick to approve the agenda with the additions. Everybody, all members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. With that, we're moving on. We have no on to business, no public hearings, and we're going on to eight, which is a cleaning services contract for the city's facilities. And would you like to take over?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. We put out a request for proposals. I drafted one, had it advertised, put it on the city's website. People came in and picked up some. And we had three returns on the proposals. So we had three proposal returns coming back. And the three we received, one was from Joshua Risto, and he had proposed doing the services for $15 an hour plus an extra $30 per community center event. Our second respondent was Elizabeth Nyberg, and she responded with $18 per hour to perform the services. And our third respondent was John Charlemagne at $11 per hour to do the services. I read their proposals. All three seem competent and have the capacity to perform these services. So I would recommend to city council to go with John Charlemagne at $11 per hour and execute the included contract with them.
I just have one question.
Yes.
In number two of the general provisions, we have we'll provide approximately 10 hours of service per week. Is there a reason why we have the number of hours in there? I mean, I think we need to just have it that big to do the job.
That was just a kind of a guideline to give the respondents an idea of how many hours you would approximately take. And that was after discussions with Elaine before she retired.
Okay.
So some people may take a little more, take a little less.
And they understand if it takes more to do the job.
Yep. That's just an approximation of what it may take.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have, maybe Aaron can explain this. Under limitation of liability, it's understood and agreed that the teenage will have no liability in the city or any of the projects or lots of damage. Is that a normal thing? Explain that to me, please.
That probably should come out.
Okay, I'm wondering about that. Because there could be things that would happen that would be.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I think that.
Okay.
In this situation.
Anybody else have any comments or any questions regarding the project? Aaron, any comments?
No, this was something that I actually put together, borrowed from a situation.
Hey.
That part I would have launched here. But I did customize the duties just according to what it's meant to be in the request for proposal. So I think probably the rest of it should be adequate in the towers. That is.
Whatever it takes to do the job. Okay, any questions, anyone? Any comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the facility cleaning service agreement with John Sheeneman for $11 per hour?
With the change.
With the change, with price. With eliminating the limitation of liability.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made by Rick, seconded by Brad to approve the facility cleaning service agreement to John Sheeneman for $11 an hour. We're eliminating the limitation of liability. All members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, moving on. There's no presentations, and we're going to the consent agenda. I have one question on the claims for payments. I'm totally in support of the Fairfax people, but there's $1,000 for repairs. I was wondering what that was. It's about halfway down the page.
Donation for repairs. What that was is the city, we had received a donation from Jim Winezettle.
Okay.
To do some work done at the ball fields. And as part of the monies that were received, he wanted $1,000 of that donation to go towards the Fairfax.
I just, yeah, okay, that's right. Okay, anybody else have any? Do you need to probably explain the reassessment of 405 Park Street?
I can certainly do that quickly.
Okay.
In the event of a tax forfeiture of a property, when it goes back to the county on tax forfeiture, any special assessments that any entity may have on it are wiped clean from the property. That way, there aren't any special assessments. If the county holds it for multiple years, they aren't stuck paying those special assessments on it. So those are all wiped clean in the event of a tax forfeiture. So this property came and went up for tax forfeiture. All the special assessments, including the one that we had for the 2012 infrastructure project, was wiped off of there. And the discussions with the county, the remaining balance on there, then we are given the opportunity to reassess so that we can, the next person who takes it gets it from the county, will go ahead and pay those special assessments. So that amount that was left on the balance was $3,029.99 that would be received and owed to the 2012 infrastructure project.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'm asking for a motion to approve it.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made by Josh, seconded by Rick to approve the consent agenda. All members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Moving on to new business, number 17 is considering adoption resolution for official designations for 2018. And that is resolution 2018-1. If there aren't any questions, I ask for a motion to approve it.
We have to make some decisions on it. Yep.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to answer.
That's why I had it under new business instead of consent. Need to pick who the acting mayor will be. It was formerly Jenny Hazelton.
Okay, I mean, I was scared of official because of it. Okay, so let's go down the list here. Who would like to be acting mayor, Mayor Proton? Come on, go on. Ralph could be good.
All right.
Here's Ralph, Ralph Proton. Okay, then moving down, we have by board, Delain. We have utilities. Someone needs to join me with utilities.
Jenny was on quite a few boards.
Mm-hmm. It's not a bad one.
No, it's pretty easy doing. Who's doing that one, Brad?
Brad's gonna do it. Okay, law enforcement, which is a very, very difficult one.
I'm still in here.
Okay, Ralph, who would like to join Ralph?
I'm pretty fun.
Okay. You're really good. Your first time on the council. Okay, personnel. Okay, it looks like we got Josh, she's on there already. And Rick, you haven't said anything yet, okay? We're gonna put you on there, okay? Okay, then we need ours, fiber joint powers board.
There is a meeting coming up on that.
On the 18th?
Yes.
You give up your votes?
I don't think so, because you give me my name how many times it's on here?
The mayor.
The mayor shouldn't be on that.
I'd like to be on that one, but I can't apparently. That's the one that's official.
You don't, that.
I think you'd be good, Ralph.
I don't.
Is ours still allowed for an alternate group or not?
I don't know if they do or not.
Sometimes it's good if you have for those joint powers, because it's important to have representation there when they meet.
Remember Jenny saying that it couldn't be an appointed person, it had to be an elected official.
Okay.
You want to be on that one, Rick? Get a good one for you. You like TV.
I got a ten on top.
That's what I have too.
Okay, Ralph, I think this would be a good one for you.
When's that meeting coming up?
January 18th.
In the evening.
What day of the week is that?
Hey, you took my calendar.
Didn't have a new one yet. I don't know if I'll be able to make that one. I think I. It was an old one, so I didn't want you getting frustrated looking at a 17. It's 18th, it's Thursday at 7:00 P.M.
I can't go because I'm not gonna be in Fairfax.
Then it's over in Winthrop.
Josh? No.
Nope.
You're too quiet over there.
All right.
Good.
Nobody else wants to go.
Okay.
I think what else to do in designations, maybe want to also.
I think we should include the.
HRA.
The HRA, okay. We need another person on the HRA. And we had a meeting last night, and we decided that we would like to have another male as part of it. And Miguel said, how about Brad? Would you do it?
We'll do that as a separate motion for appointment.
Yep.
After the resolution.
Okay, so with that, we added Ralph as the mayor for Tim, and we added Brad Bastian in utilities, and Brad Bastian in law enforcement, Rick Tim in personnel, and Rick Tim on the George Powers Board. And so with that, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-2?
So move.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made by Josh, seconded by Brad to approve resolution 2018-2. All members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. And then with that, let's just go ahead and make a motion that Brad be appointed to the HRA board. Okay, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Rick, seconded by Josh to approve Brad for the HRA board. All members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, with that, we're moving on to the city credit card policy.
I discovered that the city does not currently have a credit card. We did have one in the past, but it was discontinued for a reason we weren't sure of. But having a city credit card is an important thing to have many things nowadays. If you're gonna order something online or reserve a hotel, visit our conferences, do a number of things like that. No longer can you get a purchase order sent to you, pay and then return it. It's much easier and simpler. And sometimes the only method is to do it by credit card. So I had this policy drafted. I had used it in Canby in my previous position. I based it upon a template that was approved by the Minnesota Government Finance Office Association and templates applied by the League of Minnesota Cities. Reramped it to fit the city of Fairfax. So I'd be looking. So the gist of it is, I will hold the card at all times, and I delegate its use down to my department heads as seen fit. Anytime the credit card is used, a sheet has to be filled out stating what it was used for, the amounts, all that information. So we have record keeping of it, so we can sync it up to our bills when we do reconciliations at the end of the month. It can only be used for specific purposes related to city business. Anything luxurious or deemed unnecessary will become the responsibility of whoever used that credit card to pay that bill. So a bill is kind of in that teeth to, not that I expect it to ever happen, but you have those enforcement proportions in there. So with that, any questions on it?
Anybody have a question to adjourn?
I was saying, maybe we should put a limit on it, so they could only make so much purchase at one time.
I would say shy away from that depending on what may need to be ordered. It may need to be a large item to get it to your rush quick. I think you just leave that kind of delegate of authority to me, and I have my own spending limits that I can only order so much on. And this isn't something we just go hog wild with.
But most things the city's ordered, you should have a company to come to order the stuff from anyway.
This would be something if you have to order something online to get it, hotel reservations, things of that nature. Plus, anything that comes through the credit card shows up on the vendor transactions.
I think we could put a limit on it because hotel rooms are not gonna cost over $500.
I mean, I would think like $1,000 at least.
Yeah, I think ours at school is $5,000 because, you know, that's when we start ordering into our end-of-the-year ordering. Or like, we're gonna get our tickets for Valley Fair or whatever. But we do have a limit on it, so I would suggest, I would agree with Rick on a limit.
And I would agree with him too. It's a good idea. And if we find out it's a problem, you know, let's set a limit. And if we find out it's a problem with it, we can always change it.
Yep.
And what would you prefer to have a limit?
I think $5,000 would be a good place to start.
But I think $5,000 is kind of high.
Well, I just, yeah, it's, you could get into where you're gonna want to buy that much stuff. I mean, it's.
But I agree with Rick. Usually you have an account. And you know, if you're buying that kind of stuff, you probably need to come to the council.
You buy, yeah, what's the limit for?
Find out from us what you're purchasing. We don't have just an open account here, and then we just go borrow.
What did you think for a limit?
I'm thinking like $2.
$2,000 or $2?
No, back in my mind, I thought $2, okay? And I don't know what the rest of you think.
I think $2 sounds good.
Yeah, but that's like a whole month, you know, $2,000.
Wait, is that a month or per transaction?
Month. The way we have ours, the way we have ours is that's all you could have on that card at one time.
Then we better stick with $5,000, I think.
Maybe we have to go higher.
I always think of tran- fact, I always think of per tran- fact.
Well, and maybe this one would be set up differently. But ours is they can only have so much on it at one time.
Well, if we go with that, then I can see we'd have to go $5.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just thinking, I didn't want more than $2 per transaction.
You were thinking spending.
Well. Okay, so we agree that it should be $5,000, no more than that on the card for the month. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion to? Is there anywhere in here that this is in here?
I will add it in. Yes, I can make the motion, condition, amend the policy to include $5,000 amendment. I would do so.
Okay, so I do have a motion to accept the credit card policy.
As amended.
I would make a motion to accept the credit card policy as amended with the spending of a discussed.
Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Motion is made by Ralph, seconded by Josh to approve the credit card policy. All members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Let's move on to the disposal of the ambulance.
So we have the new ambulance, and that should be coming at end of this month, perhaps early February. And then the question becomes, what are we gonna do with the old ambulance? Joel Greshack had brought up to me that Milroy First Responders has expressed interest in our old ambulance. So I'm looking for direction on how we wish to dispose of that, if we want to dispose of it towards them or simply sell it on auction. They are another government entity, so it'd be nice to get them our equipment at, I would suggest gifting it to them or at a very, very low cost. Since they are another government entity, it's nice to play well with other entities like that because sometimes when we purchase equipment from other entities, it's good to get a price break too.
And what did Joel or what did the ambulance guys think?
Joel brought the idea up to me, so they were in favor of turning it over to Milroy.
What do we think the market value of the ambulance is?
That's another question.
A few thousand, tops.
A few, yeah.
Three, two, three.
The ambulance is pretty old. I mean, yeah, it's gotta be over 20 years old.
Seems we talked about this when we agreed to purchase the new one.
Thought there was gonna be a trade-in or something. Wasn't there?
I remember there was some value there. I don't remember exactly what it was, but was it gonna be traded in? I'd have to go back and look.
I thought it was gonna be either traded in or sold for that value that would be the trade-in value. That's what I, but I would have to go back and look at my notes to tell you that.
I'd have to go back and look.
Do we have to make a decision tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay, then I think we should probably.
Table it.
Let's table it, and let's see what. It's obviously not worth a lot, but let's go back and see what we had determined we were gonna do at the time that the new one was purchased. Take care of it next meeting.
I might be generous with my money, but that's the city's money.
I know. We should just see what it was valued at.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so we'll table that, and then let's move on to the pay equity report for 2018.
So the pay equity report is something that's mandated by the state of Minnesota. And what the aim of it is, is to eliminate gender-based pay disparities between job classes. This was implemented, I believe it was, in the 80s. And every three years, a local government entity like the city has to do this report. So I went ahead this week and put in the report. It's not terribly difficult to do. You input the classifications. You put in whether male or female, salary ranges, and then you run it through the job point you associate with it. Then you run it through the system, which does the calculations for you. And on the first page there, in the compliance report, under number two, which is the statistical analysis test, if you are under 80, then you have some other requirements that you have to check for to see if you are actually compliant. But if you are over 80, then by state standards, you are in compliance. And as you can see, we are at 85.71. So by the state system, we are in compliance for our three-year test. So if there are any questions, I can field them.
So that percentage, it says, is based the result percentage of male classes below predicted pay divided by the percentage of female classes below predicted pay.
Yes.
So you only use the ones in the calculation that are below the predicted pay?
No, what I do is I fill out, there's a, on the online forum, I fill out every classification we have within the city according to our pay schedule. I fill those in. I fill in the salary ranges for them, whether it's male or female. And then once I fill that in, the program that the state has does these calculations. So there's, I don't do anything with that. The state program automatically does it and gives us our results.
And then these job classifications that I see on the second page, the job point things, that's a state thing, right? That's not us?
The job points, the classifications are what we have on our files. And the point system is the one associated with the one that the city of Fairfax has. There is a point system we have that associates points with these job types.
And then everybody loves a graph, so tell me about the graph.
The graph shows the salary versus points on the X and Y axis there. And it shows the underpayment, or the predicted pay, I should say. The line is the predicted pay, and then the male jobs are the diamonds, and the female jobs are the squares on there. So it kind of gives you an idea where those kind of fell, actuals versus what the predicted pay according to the online system was.
And what you wouldn't want to see are all of your squares below the line with all of your diamonds above the line.
Right.
Because that would be systematic inequity.
Yep, correct, discrimination. And on the back of that, you actually have the data, the data set that represents the graph. And probably the one on the right, you have that pay difference in there which correlates the graph.
Well, I didn't know anything about that, so thanks for walking me through that. I appreciate that.
Any more questions on it? If not, we need a motion to approve the compliance report.
I would make a motion to approve that compliance report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made by Ralph, seconded by Brad to approve the compliance report. All members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. And we're moving on to staff reports, and it looks like Nick you first.
Hooray. So I'll do my reports first. So as I had mentioned, the new ambulance, we're expecting it year-end of this month, hopefully early next month. And if we make it in time for the next council meeting in February, make sure we'll have it parked right up here so everybody can see it, get a good look at it. We'll get out and take a tour, right? Light siren, the whole nine yards.
I'm kidding.
Lots of us at the age where you don't look forward to an ambulance ride.
So we'll hopefully have that for the next meeting for our city council to see in all our attendance for that purchase. Working with the University of Minnesota Extension and the CNC, I'm putting together a lunch and learn event for local businesses here in town. We're scheduling it for February 13th. They're over the noon hour. And U of M Extension educator will come in. I knew him from my previous positions. He does a lot of really good seminars. And it will be about Google Maps and how you can access your data on Google Maps as a business and change it to make sure it's accurate so that in this day and age, a lot of people, when they book up someplace to eat or are looking for someplace, they're gonna pull it up on their smartphone. And if they aren't showing up properly, they aren't showing up accurately, they may miss out on business potential because of that. So this person will come in and do a nice seminar teaching local business owners how to get on and easily correct that data on there. Other things, year-end is in full swing. Chris and I are working on completing reports, getting everything together. Things are going well, auditors. We're starting with the auditors here in the office. here in the office tomorrow morning. It's a quick phone call to do operations and then sometime, probably in February, they'll show up with their team and start going with records. So we're getting that all pulled together. But January is the bulk of the work and then auditor work will go into probably February and March. And then the last thing, I just recently had my, since we have inclement weather potentially maybe coming up, I've got my desktop here at City Hall. I've got it linked up so I can work from home. If I need to, I can remote in and continue working. Or if I'm at a conference and I have the laptop, I can remote in there as well and continue working on things as needed with that as well. Other than that, that's what I have for my report. So slide over to the financials. So this is the financial report for December two thousand seventeen, kind of giving a total year look back as we have the figures together. So going over the general fund and the various categories there, the general government, we are looking at being short by we're going to be over budget. Yep, this is last year. So general government expenses, we're looking to be over by about one hundred and twenty-one thousand. And that's mainly due to the Small Cities Development Grant expenses being parked there. If you, on the revenue side, those are being offset by reimbursements we get through UCAP through the state of Minnesota for that grant program. So they are offsetting, it's just showing a deficit on the expenditure side. But that part is offset on the revenue side. The remainder of that is primarily then when Marshall retired and the, and the various payouts that happened associated with that. Public safety is expenditures are over by thirty-nine hundred dollars. And that's primarily due to the house we tore down on the north end of town not too long ago. To be only over by thirty-nine hundred is pretty good. That means that a lot of the other, other departments came in under budget to be only over by thirty-nine hundred. So that is actually pretty good to see. In highways, excuse me, highways, we are, we are under budget by three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The vast majority of that is due to street construction. There was another three hundred and twenty-five thousand that was budgeted for street construction. And that stuff that will roll over into next year with the final top coat of wear course going on. So really, if you take that out, highways was under budget by about thirty-three thousand dollars. And then in parks, we were under by, under, but, under budget by eighteen thousand. And that was due mainly to lower pool wages than expected. And then capital expenditures coming in under budget as well. So that constitutes the makeup of that. And my notes for all of these are, audit may make some adjustments to this as they find necessary. Any questions on the general fund? If not, moving forward to the water fund. The water fund expenses came in under budget by forty thousand and that includes depreciation in that. And then on the revenues, came in slightly above target by twenty-five hundred for sales. While investments came in below by fifty-three hundred. Overall revenues were below budget by eleven hundred dollars. In the original two thousand seventeen budget, there was also a call for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of reserve spending to make up the difference between revenues and expenditures. This factors in with an enacted bond account that figures into it. We only really need to be of reserve spending by three thousand dollars to make up the difference. So that's really good to see in that. Any questions on the water fund? Do the wastewater fund expenses came in over budget by about nine thousand dollars. Mainly due to the underbudgeting of wages in that fund. The wastewater revenues came in under target by thirty-nine hundred. Investment came in below by sixty-six hundred. Overall revenues of two, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Shortfall of sixty-eight hundred in the budget. Between expenditures and revenues, we were anticipating utilizing twenty-five thousand dollars worth of reserves to cover that difference. However, we only need seventeen thousand to cover that difference, which is an improvement over what was predicted. Any questions on wastewater fund? Moving to storm sewer then, expenses came in over budget by forty-five hundred dollars. With revenues coming in below by seven hundred and seventy dollars. Investment income came in above at thirty-one hundred dollars. Overall revenues of a hundred and ten thousand with two thousand dollars above budget. Originally, we were looking at needing eighty-seven thousand of reserve spending. Still pretty close, we'll only need eighty-six thousand dollars worth of reserve spending. Not much of an improvement, but still an improvement over what was predicted in two thousand seventeen. Any question on storm sewer fund? Onto the electric fund then. Expenses came in under budget by one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And really what that was, and you see in the revenue side as well, we just didn't use as much. We didn't buy as much electricity. There wasn't as much electricity used as was budgeted for, for two thousand seventeen. Electric sales came in below budget by one hundred and twenty thousand six hundred. Investments came in below target as well. Overall revenues of fifty thousand over a million with a hundred and thirty-two thousand short of budget. Again, that was just, we used less electricity in two thousand seventeen than we budgeted for. Other expenses came in under budget as well to continue to that one hundred and fifty-seven. We had anticipated reserve spending of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the twenty-five, twenty seventeen budget, but we will only need to spend five hundred and fifteen. So really good improvement there than what was predicted. Any question on the electrical budget? For the natural gas fund, similar story as electric fund, not as much electric, or natural gas was used as was budgeted for. So we see that on both the expense and revenue side. Expenses came in under budget by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. While sales came in under budget by one hundred and thirty-two. Investments came in slightly above target as well. So overall revenues of one million six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-three thousand short of budget. We're expecting revenues over expenditures in the two thousand seventeen budget of a hundred and seventy. The expected is now more a hundred and sixty. So went the other way versus the other funds, but a ten thousand dollar difference, but still making money on that as well. Any questions on the natural gas fund? And then to the liquor fund, expenses came in over budget by thirty-three hundred dollars. Excuse me. Liquor fund sales came in above budget by forty-four hundred dollars. Investments came in below target, overall revenues of five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, two thousand dollars above budget. When we take into account expenses and revenues, we are expecting revenues to be over expenditures by a thousand dollars this year. So in the black. Any questions on the liquor fund? And then on to investments. I included the prior report from the last cycle to this cycle. So you can see the differences in our investments. I subtract, I didn't include E D A and H R A, it just didn't seem necessary to do those funds. I can reinclude them if you really want to. But those are kind of managed by those two entities. So we have some decreases in our investments from the old to the new. And that's primarily liquidating those assets to move money around for the year-end journal entries. And then also having cash available because we have a number of bond payments which occur in February to have that cash on hand to pay for. And then also extra operating to make it through month to month. Any question on the investments? With that, then that is my financial report.
Anything else to say?
Nope, that is all I have.
Joe was gone. Somebody called Caitlin. You ended on a good note over that one, Caitlin, huh?
Yeah. Close, but we'll take close.
Whatever.
Anything else? So yes, that, what you just saw, January started all slow as usual. We're working on kind of building our inventory up a little bit. Definitely tried to eliminate it at the end of the year. I'm working on redoing all of the pricing. I was training that at the beginning of the year as prices on that are usually go up at the end of the year and year. So I'm working on pricing right now and we have two new people training it. See if we can do it pretty well, so. That's it. Your turn.
I didn't know.
All right. During the month of December, we had a hundred and fifty-nine different events. That's, I believe, like twelve more than the month before. And in two thousand seventeen, we had six hundred and twenty-one complaints. In two thousand sixteen, we had sixteen fifty-two. And in two thousand fifteen, we had twelve ninety-seven. So they're all actually, I don't know. Any questions?
Okay, so under the information, we have the building permits for the new units. Small Cities Development Program tracking report. Does anybody have any comments or any questions about those? And I forgot to mention, we have a vacancy on the E D A.
We do, but we don't have any names yet for them.
Oh, I know. I'm just making it a, you know?
Yep.
If you know of anyone.
Want to highlight that to these?
In the article?
Yeah, if anyone is interested. I'm just mentioning it that there's a vacancy. Okay, any council concerns, any council information?
Just kind of information, the electricians were in today to fix the lights that are, that are on the traded ground. That used to be our lights, that are now the city lights. So those should be fixed. The school's taking care of that.
Yep, good. Anybody else, anything?
I have one more then, if nobody else has another one.
Go ahead, I'll let you have it.
At one of our last meetings, we were talking about the streets and stuff. We were talking about doing some kind of an assessment of, of how many trucks use that alley. Has that, anything happened with that that you know of or?
To my knowledge, that hasn't been completed yet.
Okay.
I'll check with the engineer.
Something that probably should get done though because.
Well, yeah, because.
And I understand what they're saying. It's not used a lot by a lot of big trucks.
But there's a ratio of how much more damage a truck does than a car. And to save somebody a little bit of money to, to then cost us more down the road isn't worth it either. So we need factual information to make a good decision. Well, knowing what you need.
There is a, there is a full truck that goes down the alley and a U S panel truck.
Right, and you know, it can change. If businesses change, it can always change. And we're not going to be doing this every ten years. Okay. Anything else, anybody? Nothing, I guess I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
To me.
Josh?
Yep.
Second by Rick to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, we're meeting this adjourn. Something, I'm going to use this camera.